I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, hello, welcome back. I hope everybody had great holidays. And now we get into it. Report of the chairman, I want to remind everyone, especially my fellow board members, that we have budget workshops tomorrow and Thursday at 6:30. Please note the time change. And also, we need everybody's BoE self-evaluations in. Have we gotten all those? Or could you let me know?
Yeah.
Alright, so please, let's get those in. I'd like to get that into the calendar for us to review with the superintendent's regular mid-year review per our new policy. We'll move on to public participation. Joe, anyone sign up?
No.
Anyone here for public participation? Public participation? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do any board members have any questions on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Any questions on the warrants or wires? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Justin, can I have a second? Christine, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Reports of the committees. We'll start with our students. Welcome back.
Good evening, everyone. I hope we're all having a marvelous Monday, and I also hope we all had a spectacular New Years. Winter break was a great chance for all students to catch up on some sleep and prepare ourselves for midterms in the upcoming change in semester. Though I was able to get some sleep myself, I also know that many seniors did not have that chance as they submitted their final college applications before their early January deadlines. An upcoming event that Massey juniors and seniors have to look forward to is Alumni Day, which is this Thursday during flex. Recent Massey graduates will return to Massey that day to bestow their wisdom to the upper classmen.
I think I've had a streak going for sharing news about Massey Robotics at these meetings, but the program has been so busy that they can't go without recognition. This past weekend, Robotics sent four teams to Hershey, Pennsylvania for the Vex Robotics Sugar Rush Signature Event. Most notably, our Team 4478B ranked 10th of 59 teams and reached the semifinals in their division, which was aptly called the Treats Division. We're very proud of B-Team.
Not to trouble, but I was a judge at the Robotics competition here.
Oh, were you?
I didn't see your team, but I was really impressed with the interviews I did for the Massey teams.
Yeah.
Great job for all of you.
This Wednesday, junior students and parents have the opportunity to attend the college planning night. Many juniors, including myself, are anxiously planning their college admissions process that will take place later this year. So this opportunity will offer valuable information from a guest speaker regarding a clear timeline and process that can hopefully relieve some of the stress that comes with junior year. And I have our sports report for the evening. In boys' basketball, they have recent wins against Kaner Tech, 82 to 57, and Brookfield, 67 to 53. And they have upcoming games against Immaculate and New Fairfield this week. In girls' basketball, they have a recent winning against Brookfield and an upcoming game this week against Immaculate and Willby. And in boys' hockey, they have a recent win against Woodstock Academy, and they have upcoming games against Jonathan Law and New Milford this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any board members have any committee reports?
We've met with policy, but we have some more.
Okay. Okay, moving right along. We'll go to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
We'll start with Jen with the special education update.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, everyone. There isn't a hard copy of my report tonight in the packet, but it is linked online. So I made copies if anybody wants them. I'll just pass them.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, so we look at December's numbers. We didn't have any students that moved into district. We had four students who were dismissed from services, and we had 12 students that were made eligible. That brings our total number to 651, which still has us within that 18 percent population across district. So looking over at financials, if you look on, starting on page one, we had an increase in spending in outside agencies of $32,000 in December. We also had an increase in tuition public of $36,000. And also, if you look at our system-wide transportation line, that's on page three, there's a significant increase in spending. It's $108,000 from December. That's for a couple of different reasons. One, because we were paying a bunch of invoices that had come in since the beginning of the school year, and also, we encumbered some transportation of the students that I was telling you about that we've been trying to place for quite a while. So those complex students we talked about. So that's why that number has jumped so significantly. It did jump so significantly in December. Our other professional independent service line increased by $11,000, and that is due to us paying some invoices for psychiatric evaluations and things of that nature. So that's where we are right now. We're still okay, our bottom line. We will be receiving our first installment of excess cost at the end of the month, and that will kind of tell us where we are percentage-wise. As you remember, last year, we got a little bit less than 70 percent. So we budgeted for 70 percent, and we'll see what happens in the coming weeks. Okay?
Any questions for Jen? Alan?
Yeah, but first, when you mentioned outside agencies, what is...
So those are all different kinds of services that we provide to students. Some of them are out of district. They could be different counseling that can't be done within district, any kind of OT or PT, things like that, that's specialized out of our in-district staff.
Correct. You're on 651, you're alive.
651 is a new high. You are correct. Yes.
If any number Jen says from this day...
Is gonna be the historic high. Any number.
Is one area we don't want to be number one at?
Yes, no, we do not.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'll be back tomorrow night. Thanks.
Thanks.
I don't have anything other than, you know, just to welcome up our principals who are going to be coming today, as well as Brian Gorgon, our athletic director. We're gonna be talking about athletics as we workshop the budget in elementary, middle school, high school, and athletics today. One thing I will add is thank you to those people who submitted questions. I think as of about 2:30 or so, these were the questions we had. So if anyone put anything on after that, we didn't get to it, but I did put these at everyone's seat beforehand. Happy to talk about any of that, or we can talk about it perhaps afterwards as well.
Okay, so board members, just as a reminder, the administrators of the departments are gonna be coming up, going through their individual budgets, obviously ask questions, and I'll always refer to the board member that sat with them. If they have anything to add, that would be very helpful. This is our time to dive in deep, and then after we've heard from everyone, then we'll get into our deliberations about the pros and cons. Okay? Jeff?
Do you prefer that we wait to ask questions after they're done with presentations? Or...
I would suggest to ask. I think it's more comfortable, it's more of a back and forth if you ask during. So if something comes up and you have a question, I would definitely welcome the back and forth at that point.
Yeah, now is our time to ask about specifics from these departments. Okay? Alright. Elementary schools?
Elementary's up first.
Good evening, everybody. We'd like to start by thanking Jeff for being our budget liaison and listening with us one day about our budget. We've gone over this in years past, but basically, just as a reminder, we do have two separate things that we do during budget season. One is we talk about the things that we manage at our own school level, and then, two, we talk about the things that we make requests, in this case of Joe, to put in his budget. So those are the two sort of areas. The first we're gonna start with is our building managed budget lines. So these are really at the elementary level, just our instructional supplies. As a reminder, a lot of what we use are consumables, so we have chart paper, composition books, things like that. We have to replenish those annually. We have already talked with you in years past about how we have an equitable allocation, so we look at really per pupil costs, but we also have equity across all three schools. They've been stable over the years. We've been using those lines. We need those lines, and we continue to ask for them. The one area that we did ask for an increase in this year is math instructional supplies. Previously, it was allocated at $5 a student. We're requesting that it be increased to $10 a student. This is really so that we can support the implementation of illustrative math and building thinking classrooms, which I know Evelyn and Kevin talked with you about earlier this school year. This is still below the $20 per student allocated for literacy. We did a survey of our teachers. Evelyn helped lead this with our math coaches, and we asked our teachers, what do you need for math? And these are just some of the items that they've requested, and this is really to help us implement these small group centers that illustrative math requires us to do. And so this is just an example. I can keep going. Of all the supplies that our teachers are really requesting of us, so we would like to support them and purchase these things for them for next school year. Between our three schools, our combined budget is $169,000, so we just like to note that that is .2 percent of the $75 million budget, and the increase that we're asking for is $4,000. So this is five thousandths of a percentage of the total budget. So we don't feel like we're asking for much, and yet, we can do so much with this extra money. So please and thank you.
So Kelly mentioned there's budget items that are controlled at the building level, and then items that are controlled at the district level. So the requests that we have for the district level are three, and they include a 1.0 math and science specialist, a .4 band teacher, and a 1.0 assistant principal, so an administrator for Stepney Elementary School.
Would you be able to go into more detail about the responsibilities of the assistant principal? I just think there's a lot of misunderstanding out there about what they do.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Because in Fairfield, they come in, the assistant principals come in two hours early, and an early day for them is 6:00 PM.
And we appreciate that, and when I do, I have an... You asked that same question at the last Board of Ed meeting that we were here, and so I did compile a list, and I do appreciate that, and I'll share that in just a few minutes. Thank you.
So we are gonna start first with the math and science specialists that we're requesting. So first, I'm gonna take you through what our current model is for both ELA and for math, and then I'm gonna draw a comparison at the end and just point out two important things that we want you to note. So the first is that the ELA... They're telling me to slow down. I know I talk fast. Okay, so this is our model for the ELA instructional leader. So right now, we have Dr. Cara Tanner. She's our administrator for ELA. And at each building, we have a consultant. So we have those three consultants in each building, and then each building also has a number of certified specialists. And those two people combined really support the teachers. So you have those two people who don't have their own classrooms, but they are either providing intervention or support to teachers, who are then supporting all the classroom teachers, and that's our ELA model. For our math and science model right now, we have Evelyn, who supports every single teacher by herself. In addition, she supports six non-certified interventionists who also support our students. So I want to draw your attention to two things. One, ELA is one subject area that one person oversees. So although ELA certainly encompasses a lot of different areas, you know, we're talking reading, writing, phonics, things like that, it's all one person, for sure, they're related. Math and science are two subject areas that one person is overseeing, and what you would see at the secondary level is really that there's a math instructional leader and there's a science instructional leader. In our case, we have one person doing those two things. In addition, you'll notice that in our ELA flowchart, we have nine reading teachers who are helping to support 75 classroom teachers who support 1,500 students. So that's 10 people altogether that are really supporting our teachers. In math and science, we have one person who's supporting 75 teachers plus six math interventionists who all support 1,500 students. So you can see that us asking for this one additional person is really just, hopefully, a step in the direction of really the support that we need for math. We have noticed over the years that our state testing scores in math are traditionally lower than literacy. We feel that we give a lot of money and time and resources to literacy, and we're looking to give a similar support to math, so that hopefully we can increase our scores and also implement the programs that we've just selected with integrity and see a rise in our scores as a result. Questions about math before we move on?
Okay, so the .4 increase for the band teacher is going to be combined with the existing .6 music teacher, so it'll become a 1.0 position, but the increase is just .4, and it will be dedicated for band instruction. And this particular request is directly related to the increased enrollment in the music programs, most specifically at Stepney and at Massey. The enrollment in band at Stepney has tripled in the last few years. I think it's 12 to 36, and at Massey, it has more than tripled in the last several years. So staffing for 12 beginning band students looks a lot different than staffing for 36 of them. So the current staffing we have in place is just no longer adequate, given the number of students that are participating in these programs, which is really great for our music programs. It is growing and it is thriving. Additionally, this increase gives us a lot more flexibility when we are scheduling these music lessons, because this .4 will be divided. So .2 will be at Stepney, think of that like a day, and .2 will be at Fawn Hollow, so that's another day. So there's a full day of instruction that can happen for band at Stepney with this increase, and a full day that can happen at Fawn Hollow, whereas now, the model that we have relies on shared staff. And you may have remembered Joe talking about the inefficiencies that come with shared staff. So the current model we have relies on shared staff, so we're only able to offer instruction in the morning. So having a full day is going to significantly benefit all of our students. And, one more thing, and not only does it help just with the staffing and the flexibility, it can also help Massey out as they are exploring their options with their master schedule, because the shared staff is the Massey band director. So it really covers a lot of bases. It rounds out the staffing, which we so desperately need. It gives us greater flexibility at the elementary level, and it eliminates or greatly reduces the need for shared staff.
So at the last meeting, so explain the morning lesson that you have. That's...
Yeah.
That's right before school.
So the lessons currently are before school and first thing in the morning. And so being able to have that flexibility is gonna make it a little bit better for our families as well.
So the kids have to get dropped off an hour early?
Right, right, for those targeted, very specific lessons relating to trumpet or drums. So this will lessen that quite a bit. And last, but certainly not least, we have our 1.0 assistant principal, who I can tell you is life-changing. It's life-changing.
Ashley, before you get into that, before you move on, Joe and Ron, adding the .4 is gonna equal a 1.0, so have benefits been included in the budget?
Well, the current is .6, too.
Yeah, and we have benefits built into the...
To that. Okay, and then, Joe, these presentations, as they come in, would you set us up with a link, or we can go back to these?
Yeah, all of this will be on the... So once we show them tonight, we put them on the...
Website?
Under budget.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we are requesting a 10-month assistant principal for Stepney due to the growing population of students as well as staff. So currently, Stepney has 513 students, and we're getting two new ones in the coming weeks. 86 special education students, 55 students with 504s, and as of next week, 28 students that receive MLL services. Also, you know, I oversee currently 48 certified staff members and 34 non-certified staff members, which includes paraeducators, secretaries, custodians, and cafeteria staff. So, you know, with, you know, all of that, you know, it is, would be lovely to have some assistance and leadership. And so, Alan, at our last Board of Ed meeting, you had asked, you know, what is the role of an assistant principal? So that's kind of, I think this slide captures a lot, but I kind of took that and started to think, what does an elementary administrator do on a daily basis? Like, what do we all do? And so I think, I thought of it through the lens of we do small things and big things. And a lot of times, the small things are the most important things, and the big things are the things happening behind closed doors that sometimes go unnoticed, but they are also the most important things. And all of it contributes to the success of students. So humor me, because you asked what we do, and so I created a list. So we wear many hats, starting with greeting students when they arrive in the morning, and saying goodbye to them as they leave at the end of the day, and directing traffic in between. Trying to be visible during lunch, recess, and in classrooms, to connect with students and build relationships. Organizing spirit events to build morale communication. So we do a daily bulletin every day to make sure, you know, the building is functioning, as well as weekly updates to the community. Checking in with staff and families who may be experiencing hardships inside or outside of school. School fundraising events, assemblies, PTO collaboration, facilitating PPTs to ensure compliance with regulation. Planning and attending meetings, MTSS meetings, faculty meetings, building-based meetings, 504 meetings, staffing's before the meetings, midday meetings. Developing knowledge of K5 curriculum and instruction that's ever-changing and doing our best to keep up with that. Conducting bullying investigations to ensure protocol is followed, and then developing support plans for all of those students involved, and communicating that out to staff. Being human resource in our buildings. Hiring qualified staff members, organizing interview committees, monitoring, and then also, not to mention, monitoring, providing feedback to staff members that may need that extra support. Substitute coverage. Our littlest learners need coverage every day, and that, you know, we get up early to make sure our building is covered, and that's where that daily bulletin goes out each day to make sure people know what they're doing. Maintenance and facilities is part of our role, ensuring the safety of the building and making changes and rooms and all of those different things. Schedules, master schedules, special schedules, lunch and recess schedules. Evaluations of certified staff, not to mention the 34 non-certified staff that I mentioned, paraeducators, custodians, secretaries, that happens each year. School budget overseeing that, attending Board of Education meetings, collaborating with the bus company to support families, bus reports, behaviors. Committees happen, district committees, building committees. So we have the school climate committee, safety committee, the CCL, PBIS, curriculum council, PDAC. I think kindergarten transition is a huge part of our role, welcoming our new families and building relationships and trust, graduations, field trips, and then follow-up. All of that involves follow-up and communicating with, you know, what happened with a student, what happened with the family, checking all those boxes. And then just general collaboration, being able to grow ideas together, and not to mention email. So that's in no particular order, but I hope that, I think, captures what elementary and administrators as a whole do. And, you know, I see just quickly, having been an assistant principal, you know, although we may have distinct roles, and sometimes, I see it as being able to triage together and having another administrator that has a connection to families and students and staff in those moments. An example that I'll just quickly give is, the other day, I had a teacher that planned a lesson, and I was going in to observe her, and unfortunately, I had a student having a really hard time that I had a connection to. So of course, the student is, you know, who I went to, but the teacher who had, you know, who had planned and put time into that observation, that got kind of pushed to the side. And they understand, but it's that triaging where you have to pick what's most important, and students clearly always come first. But having another, you know, administrator in the building, we could have worked together on that. So that gives a quick summary of all that happens, and I'm probably, that's not even a comprehensive list. Yeah.
Do you guys do grade-level meetings?
We do grade-level meetings, midday meetings.
Who runs those?
So the grade-level meetings, it depends. You know, a lot of times, we give teachers, or I, I should say I, I give teachers, you know, things to focus on, and that was our... We have something called the Communication and Collaboration Liaison, so we'll talk, I'll meet with that group of representatives from each grade level, and then I'll say, "Talk about this at your grade-level meeting." So there's, I can't physically get to every grade-level meeting. Midday meetings, Evelyn and Cara run a lot of those.
Reading consultants.
And our reading consultants, yeah. And I try to, we try to pop into those, too, as much as possible, but sometimes, you know, we may be late to a meeting or things like that. So I hope that answers, you know, what, and I think of it as, I don't think of it as distinct, like, assistant principals versus principals, it's a collaboration. And again, you're kind of just, you know, working together to kind of do all of those different roles and responsibilities.
Jeff, any, since you've sat with him?
What I would say, when I said that, I was very surprised at the sheer volume of stuff one principal has to be accountable for. And I think that was, you know, very, not maybe shocking, but I was very surprised. And I, the other thing I think you guys did point out was, that we talked about is, you know, comparison to the other schools, elementary schools in our DIRD, is that we are the only ones of certainly our size that do not have assistant principals. So, you know, we're in a growing districts, our pressure points are our elementary schools, and I think they could certainly use the help. The other thing I would point out is the math specialists. You know, I think all of us would like to see higher math schools, and that's a... But, you know, we do very well with ELA, and so implementing the additional math resources, I think, is an absolute no-brainer.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How much does this ease your burden of evaluation process? Or does it?
The evaluation process may look the same, you know, because we tend to, across the district, kind of look at where we allocate all of our administrators. And I would say, you know, I don't think, and I think having an assistant principal would actually allow me to get into classrooms more often, and the assistant principal as well. So, you know, I'm not even that worried about alleviating the evaluation spot piece. I, that actually is an added benefit, because we'll be able to be more visible in the classrooms. Does that make sense?
That's...
Yeah, so the evaluation piece is kind of fun, because you have to grow and work with new teachers and give feedback, but sometimes, other things are happening and you have to...
Right, but for those conflict management issues that you just spoke of, it allows you to free yourself up potentially.
Yeah, thank you.
Just an interesting side note, I'm not saying I would support this, but in Westport, they hire administrators at the elementary level just to do sped compliance. That's it, that's their only job, and that's full-time.
And if it does go through, that would be, I mean, and Kim Nelly has a strong background in special education, and that would be something we would be looking for in a candidate as well.
Lee, day-to-day or week-to-week, what are you able to do now that you weren't able to do a year ago?
It's almost like, like, before assistant principal, after. It's just totally different. It just, it was so hard to manage and attend to the things that needed attending to when I was on my own. There were things that just couldn't happen, because there are only 24 hours in a day, and there's only six hours during the day. And so, like, the stress incurred when you don't feel like you're able to do your job effectively, and you're potentially not keeping children safe, it's just, it's so hard, it's so difficult. So having a partner, like, the days at Fawn Hollow still fly by. Like, we're never bored, there's never a quiet day, like, we're always really busy. Like, there's plenty to do to keep us busy, but it's just, it's just an adequate amount of staffing to do the things that we need to do. And in Monroe, we like to do them really well. So, like, that's important to us. And when I didn't have that person, I couldn't do it really well. I was barely surviving.
And helps the students thrive more.
Yes, yeah. I couldn't have, honestly, I would not have been able to continue without an assistant principal.
And it's the relationships, again, it's having those relationships, because that matters most. And I think having somebody else with those relationships, that, you know, our teachers have them, but sometimes, you know, you need somebody else. And even the other day, to kick off the new year, Evelyn and I, I had the privilege of sitting with her and talking, kind of planning ahead for a little while, and I thought, oh, this is what it feels like. Because my, when I, in my previous position, my principal and I would kind of plan, delegate, and then off we would go to execute. And to have somebody else to sit with just for a little bit of time to talk about, in this case, it was math, you know, but it was so fun to be able to do that, because great things happen when you have great minds thinking together, so.
Give me the collaboration.
Yeah, yeah.
I ask because that's a big ask. It's a big ask. And we just added an administrator last year. So I'm gonna be asking more questions about this, too, because I think the rest of the things, for me, the rest of the items are no problem for me. This is a big ask, and that's why I'm gonna ask even more questions. I want to really understand. I don't doubt the need, but I want to understand this really well, or better. I want to understand it better. That's all. So be prepared for more questions on that one, because it's a big ask.
Joe, can you share, or can you, or can you guys share the DIRD with the assistant principal information that you shared with me? I mean, that'd be helpful with the board.
So I, and I can share, yeah, we can share it out. I had collected some information on the DIRDs, you know, and... I had collected some information on the DIRDs, you know, and, and I think most have assistant principals, especially with that, this size. Newtown has teacher leaders that actually do evaluate as well, but their school sizes are much about, you know, 200 to 300 students. Are you pulling that up? Yeah. So, yeah, I can share it, but in our DIRD, we're one of the only that don't.
Jeff, that's a good, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you can get that to Joe.
Yeah, I would, absolutely.
I don't think it's a DIRD thing, I think most school systems in Connecticut.
Yeah, I agree.
Has an assistant principal. I, I've never heard of this.
Yeah.
Monroe's the only town I've ever heard of that doesn't have assistant principals.
And I pull DIRD comparison because that's.
Yeah, like, it's not a DIRD thing, I mean, you could go regardless.
That's fine, I mean, pull, pull the entire state of, you know, elementary schools, who has an assistant principal, who doesn't?
I'll add that to my list of things to do.
Can you delegate that to the assistant?
Thank you, thank you.
Deligging. All right, thank you. Anything else, your principals?
Well, I think, I think the other thing is the transition in the school itself. We talked about the student population, but the growth over years, I mean, we talked about 80% of the population being special ed, I mean, we've had significant change. Be nice to see that itemized to your school specifically, what that growth, change has been over time, because I think that has a significant impact on your time.
Yeah, and I, I mean, this is my fourth year here, I think when I started, it was about 460 kids. That's a guesstimate right now, but that number is jumping out to me.
But it's not just the pure enough, it's the composition.
I think, I think during my presentation, I talked about moving forward back out, the number of special education students that have, Stephanie, the number of MLL students has a higher concentration than Stephanie, and the number of students on Frampton's lung, she exceeds the district average right now.
It's a good point, Ashley, yeah. So, there were about 460 when you?
I believe that was the number that's jumping out to me, yeah.
Everything grew but your, your building.
Right, the building, the physical space, yeah. And also Mike, yeah, and I'm still.
Is it, is it fair to say, like, you're gonna pay for it one way or another, so if you don't hire an assistant principal, you're just gonna hire, have to hire more staff to help offload some of the responsibilities? Because other people are doing this work, whether it be a school psychologist, running PPT meetings or something else, you're, you're paying for it one way or the other.
Right, yeah. And they're singletons in a way too, and they're already at full capacity as well, right?
I'm sorry?
Their, their singletons, our school psychologists are one of it, like, they're, you know, there's only one at each building, school councils are only one at each building, and they're maxed out as well, right? It would be hard to give, it would be hard for me to give my school counselor more work, she's one for 700, right? You know, the school psychologist at Font Hollow, same thing, you know, so they're, it's like, those folks don't have room in their schedule to take on more work either.
So, I see what Alan's saying. When, when, when you look at it, and he's, he's actually, he's right, you either pay now, this way, or you're still gonna pay, you're just gonna spread it out.
Yeah, you're just having people from central office drive down to the buildings to help, it's, you're paying for it.
It's the same problem we're going through with, with travel now, which is what we're doing with music, and Joe has been very vocal about this, when we move people, and hey, I've taught here forever, we move people forever, and we pay for that because we lose all that time as they're on the road, traveling.
So, let me ask you this, do you, is the best use of, of those positions, and again, I don't doubt, doubt the need, is the best use of funds an assistant principal or a bunch of part-timers or two full-timers? I mean, you're gonna pay the money, right? The dollars are there.
Part-time to do what?
I think if you look at it this way.
I mean, with the tasks that she has.
The assistant principal, my feeling, they are going to, they are going to touch, don't take the word the wrong way, everybody, from parent to custodian to the driver of the bus, they're going to touch everybody. I think if you hire part-timers, and I'm not picking on anybody who works there part-time, they're already stretched, they're in for .4, they're in for .5, and they're gone at that .4, .5. To lead to Alan's point a half hour ago, that assistant principal's not gone till the day's done. There is no .4, .5. They're there till 5:00 at night, and we've all passed Monroe, and I've seen the teachers' cars there at 5:15 at night, as I'm blown by Monroe. So, I think that's the difference you gotta look at, or once again, are we getting what we need for our students and our staff? Part-time is an answer, but to me, when the clock's over, and I'm not picking on a part-timer, my gosh, I, they're gonna go, like, like they should.
It's an open question. If we were gonna spend $200,000, how, what's the best use of that? Is it two full-timers, is it six part-timers, or is it the assistant principal? That's my question. And I'm looking at YouTube because you're, you're, you're in the field.
Assistant principal makes more sense. Like I said, if you bag it, you're just gonna have to hire more staff in different areas, you're gonna have people from central office driving down to these buildings, pulling people like Kevin to cover buildings, and it's just horribly inefficient.
And it centers on relation, I keep going back to relationships because I think about myself coming in as a principal three years ago and trying to form those connections and understand kids, and now, three, almost, you know, going, this is my fourth year, you know, when, when situations arise, I think I have built the trust of the families that I serve to know that I do have their children's best interest always, you know, children first, but that comes with time, and, and again, being there every day and connecting and seeing them in the classrooms and being with, and being present. I mean, if you're present and you're there, you know, the problems, the bigger problems don't always happen as much, right? It's when you're not there, you know, connecting in the moment or following up and follow-up. I, I say that because sometimes, I'm sure we all feel this way, we're home in bed and we're like, "I forgot to do that," right? But that can make or break you, whether it's a follow-up with a parent or a follow-up with a teacher or a follow-up with a child, right? You promised a child you were gonna come back and talk to them about something, but oh no, something, you got pulled this way. And I'm not to say that that wouldn't happen with two adults in this, you know, a leadership role, but again, it goes back to those relationships and trust because it's much easier to call a parent and say, "I'm so sorry, I got caught up with something," because you have the relationship with them. But when people float in and float out, it's just impossible to form those same connections.
That's my point.
Yeah, I hope that makes.
That doesn't work, it's exactly what she was saying, what I've noticed, without giving too much detail, like, if there's something going on with a particular situation in a classroom, a lot of times, the parent would feel comfortable coming in and discussing it with the assistant principal because, you know, they built that relationship. If you have someone who's just driving from school to school, it's, it's not gonna happen.
I mean, for me, that's the largest point. When I, as an educator, I, you know, as a coach, a student, I mean, I grew, grew up here, when I have an issue and I want to walk to that office and I need an answer now, and Ashley's door is shut, Lee's door is shut, Kelly's door, I know that they're handling a crisis, but darn it, I'm in a crisis too. And as a teacher, I need that answer now, where do I get it from? Do I get it from the other two professionals that we hired? Dave, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm thinking of myself teaching 700 kids a year, and how many times I was in the principal or vice-principal's office with a major crisis? If the principal's office was closed, I had Lee's office open, or I had Kerry Morrow's office open, the vice-principal was there for me, and the minute I walked in, they knew there was trouble, because I was never in that office unless there was trouble. With that door closed, it's, it's hard, it's really hard to, and I know what you mean, it's a big ask, Dave. It's a big ask, but Stephanie is also, it's growing, it's booming.
I think that's, that's the key factor we're missing. I mean, we just went through, looking at demographics studies of where it's gonna hit, the tidal wave's coming.
It's not going down.
No, it's just blowing.
What school's it hitting? Right? If you look at what they're saying, the growth is going to happen there. So, either we get ahead of this wave or we get smacked by it, but I think the argument for a person versus multiple people is you get to decide where your expertise is and where you're needed. So, as opposed to pulling resources that are fragmented, you can say, "Well, today, I need this resource and I have an assistant principal who can do this."
Yes.
Right? So, you have the latitude to make the call on the spot versus having to call around and hope that you have resources somewhere available to handle the crisis. I, I, and I know it's a big ask, it is a huge ask, but, you know, we, we hit it now, we can hit it hard later, that's how I'm looking at it.
Well, and there's a lot of intangibles too with having an assistant principal. You know, it is growing and deepening those relationships, it's the students thriving, it's the ability to complement one another, you know, hire someone that brings in, you know, that can complement maybe a weakness or something, so.
Well, we see that now, right? The three of you guys really work well together, and, you know, you work on a lot of things as a unified body that really makes us stronger, as far as I'm concerned. I think that, that added resource would really add to that, so.
Alex, I just put it in perspective, Westport hires an administrator just to do one of those bullet points, full-time administrator, facilitate PPTs, ensure compliance with regulations, all-time job administrator in Westport schools at the elementary level. Just that, so that puts it. Perspective.
I'd like to start by Jerry's point, and if you guys could help explain, like, what happens now, when, as Jerry said, if that door is shut and there's something else going on, I mean, walk us through kind of what happens and where does a teacher go now? Or in the situation where we don't have assistant principals?
So, I'll just go with the start.
Yeah, I would say we're awfully lucky because I have Diane and Stacy and Leslie who are in our main office, so they know, you know, they can kind of help to triage those things too. So, if the door is closed or if I'm in a PPT or if I'm in a classroom, yeah, we're pulled out and, you know, and so, and they help or they'll shoot us a message and I'll, I'll look at it and say, you know, okay, you know.
Jerry's melting down, I gotta run.
Yep, he's at the door, and, you know, and so that's kind of how it works right now.
And we end up becoming less responsive in general because something is going to have to be sacrif, you know, it's like, we're not going to get to everything, and so we're making those decisions about what we are going to get to and what we can't get to. And so, when you only have one person, more and more gets left behind. And so, you're constantly triaging, "Well, I have to absolutely do this." So, like, it, it gets addressed, it just might not get addressed in a timely manner, and, you know, that's where there's a level of expectation in Monroe. Like, we like to respond to families, we, we want to be supportive of students, we want to be as in the moment as possible, but, you know, we can't solve everything all at the same time.
And everyone needs time off, right? You know, so you just can't stop.
Yeah, you have to balance.
Right, yeah.
But even tomorrow, you're, you're coming to visit us and we're welcoming you to see some math instruction, and I had it all blocked off on my calendar, and I'm gonna miss the first, you know, couple observations because a student, I need to meet with a student, so. So, that's where, but luckily, we have the team that's gonna go with you, but I would have liked to be there and be in the classrooms also, seeing that same math instruction to develop my, my knowledge even from expertise, you know, expert, expert teachers, but tomorrow I'm gonna do that and then I'll hopefully join you at some point, so. And that's just kind of how we manage it, yeah. And you just keep smiling, right?
Smile and wave. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad you had me.
Thank you.
Tucker at the middle school?
Hi, everybody, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Now, I'm gonna talk about something a little different. We are in a period of stability with student enrollment in the middle school, and we should take it, we'll, we'll enjoy that. So, so the conversation today, in two years, I'll be back with a, with a different conversation for you as our current third grade comes charging into middle school, but for now, we have a very stable student population to plan for, for next year. Thank you to Chrissy for coming over on a very rainy day, I really appreciate her really thoughtful questions about how we do things, why we do things, and all the review. And thank you to our secondary instructional team, who we share with Masick, who carefully goes over every line of the budget and presents it to me, for me to take it to Joe. And, you know, I think we did better communicating this this year than ever, but by the time we get to here, there's already things that we have identified that have bubbled up but have not been prioritized to come through. So, in an era where everything costs a little more every year, when we're bringing in the same line item year to year, it's because the team here has found efficiencies, you know, ways to evolve and stay with the times, so I really appreciate that work. Thank you. Our proposed budget for fiscal '26 is 148, 753, with a projected student enrollment of 807. Right now, there are 769 students at Jackie Hollow School, that's our district-wide 6, 7, and 8, and they're served on two campuses, main campus and our STEM campus. At this time last year, it was actually a month ago, I believe, when we sat together, the projection was 767. So, we came right in on, on the sort of population explosion that's happening other places we have not experienced in the past couple of years. So, we're planning for a fairly stable increase for just basically cost of doing business, and what you see there represents a 3.85% increase overall. Major drivers of the Jackie Hollow operating budget is our commitment to hands-on learning. And I think, I used to maybe convey that this was specific to the Unified Arts classes, but really, anywhere that kids can move and be hands-on with their learning, they're activating more of their brain, they're further engaged. We know movement, movement is emotionally regulating as well, so in all subject areas, we search for ways for kids to be immersed in their learning, and that indicates supplies and consumables across all departments. Our PE and intramurals and team athletic opportunities for kids are all woven into the building operating budget, we don't look at them separately. So, our athletic director, Steph Van de Venter, has submitted as a department within the building budget for athletics for Jackie Hollow. We have very much a flat budget coming back in. Sometimes, small changes to the budget can look like larger percentages if it's a smaller item, but I wanted to just call your attention to a few things that relate to our priorities. We are seeing effectiveness from the increased vertical surfaces, whiteboards, and additional consumable materials that we're using with illustrative math, so Kevin has us budgeting a little more for that, for all classrooms for next year. And kids have really made great connections with the Lego Mindstorm kits within tech ed, they are expensive, Mark has us replacing them on a cycle, so we'll have five new ones each year that will have to have some very elaborate lottery system to determine which group gets to use until they're all refreshed. One difference we see in our classroom library books is an increased need for titles in other languages. Sometimes, the point of learning is language acquisition and reading comprehension, and then our multilingual learners are working with text in English, but when we're focusing on other aspects like interpreting the intention of a character or focusing on other concepts, we want the text to be as accessible as possible and we look for it in multiple languages. We've offset some of this with our use of AI to translate shorter materials into PDFs, but sometimes, it's good to hold a book and put sticky notes in it, and so for that, we're looking for a small increase in classroom library books. Those are some of the highlights that jumped out at me in looking over the lines. Did anybody else have any questions about any of the adjustments in our supply lines? Everything else make sense?
On the illustrative math, I've spent just a little bit of time so far at Font Hollow, more it's happening.
You're coming over?
I'm at.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can appreciate that from my experience.
Right, yeah.
Sure.
Oh, good, yeah, and it does look different than how we learned math. And having the kids writing, embracing, talking to each other, it's another layer of making that learning stick, so we appreciate that. Enjoy this slide. Any other questions for me?
See you on Thursday.
See you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Steve?
How are we doing tonight?
All righty.
Good. Well, I'm asking. So, we two are kind of flat enrollment, so the, the graduating seniors and the incoming eighth-grade class are roughly about the same, maybe a few students differences, so we are expected for a few more students next year, but as we all know, over the summer and whatnot, we inevitably have been getting more students in, you know, typically, we've been getting about 30 per summer, so, so who knows? But right now, that's what's projected for next year, so the budget kind of reflects that. So, out of all the lines in Masick, there's, you know, we did do, again, like Julia, I will, you know, give credit where credit is due, I think the instructional leaders did a fantastic job of, you know, shifting priorities, et cetera, we were able to move some lines and adjust, you know, some lines so that the overall increase really in the controllable lines is only 16,000. Again, I did not, I love the idea, I saw Kelly's pie chart and I wanted to do it, but I didn't, I didn't do that, you know? So, I took of that, of the increases, I wanted to highlight some of the things that, that are impacting it. For, for most of you, you've been on the board a while, you know that we, we earned[1773.16] a grant from the state to bring the Wingman program to Masick. You know, we've kind of gone through the grant funds and the program's been outstanding. We want to continue it, so we're gonna dedicate some more money to the Wingman so that we can continue, continue to train student leaders in the school. They've been invaluable to the new RISE program with the, the freshmen. They, there are two Wingman paired with every RISE group so that it's not just a, a staff member that meets with the freshmen on a regular basis, but we bring in two upperclassmen to also do activities with them, have them see a friendly face in the hallway that's not another freshman, so Wingman's a great thing and as, if you haven't been to our Cultural Fair, you should come. It's incredible, it's, it's, as you all well know, we're getting so much more diverse, but it, the, as we grow in diversity, the Cultural Fair is growing in popularity as well. So about 3,300 split between the, the Wingman and the Cultural Fair supplies. We do want to continue a program that is showing great, I hate to say evidence because it's not really talked about money, but impact on student achievement at the middle school. We did do it a couple of years ago, if you remember, the, what was it, the Boost tutoring that we brought just when we were just out of COVID. Yeah, so the program we want to rebrand is that Homework Club. Again, this would now just be a kind of continuation of the middle school program where two to three days a week, kids could stay for extra help, homework help, et cetera. Give them a nice safe place in, in the library here, there'd be a certified, we would probably do, what, what it's, what's budgeted for is a certified math and humanities teachers, three days a week, and then a science teacher, two days a week, and what we had done in the past would be a chemistry, chemistry focused day, one of those days and a biology day, one of the other days. So that, again, it wouldn't be one teacher expected to have to teach all these different subjects, but that's what's been budgeted for in the 10,500. It wouldn't start running until after the first quarter, so we could also use it as part of our MTSS interventions for kids who are not completing homework through the first, you know, we'll have a quarter worth of data to then, you know, possibly schedule kids and you know what, you do need to go at least once a week and get math help so that you're completing your math homework, et cetera, so. Yeah, that's that. Medical AEDs, you can cut these if you want, we gotta find $6,000 somewhere to get them then. You know, working with the nurses, unfortunate, unfortunately, it's not something we could do, one a year for six years, they are all at the point where we need to replace them all, so. You know, I hate for the one expense all at once, but that will replace the ones in the building. I believe Brian, we replaced the athletic one this year, correct? And then some programming, culinary, they've been flat in their supply line for, I think since I've been here. We might've increased it one of the years. Obviously, the cost of food and the supplies for culinary are increasing and, but a lot of that $2,000 for culinary is the, the stand mixers that they have are about 30 years old. We've gotten our money's worth out of those stand mixers, so it's, it's time to buy some, some new ones. And then for the music program, how many of you knew, if I said marimba without you looking at the picture, would you know what it was? Because I didn't, I'm talking with mystery answers, I'm like, what's a marimba? But he showed me, the good part of this is the one that we have isn't so, so bad, it would be good enough where with a little bit of work, we could give it to Jackie Hollow, so it would stay in the system and benefit them as well, but they needed newer marimba. The marimba's about 3,000 of that 4,020 dollars and then keyboard stands, we need, we need new keyboard stands. So even though the increase, the, the drivers of the increase do not, they probably exceed the 16,000, we did make cuts in other areas. So again, I think the overall budget is pretty, pretty fiscally responsible and I would be remiss if I didn't put my own shameless plug in for the .4 band teacher at elementary because, you know, Mike starts his day, I don't know if it's Fon Hall or Stephanie and probably some days it's Fon Hall, some days it's Stephanie before he comes up to Masick. It used to be that the band was small where you could kind of squeeze, you know, 40 or so kids into band. We're pushing, you know, 80 some odd kids in band now. It's, which is a great problem to have, but when you have shared staff, it, it just makes it impossible and we do have other shared staff at Masick, but if we don't get, this is sad for me to say, but if Fon Hollow doesn't get and Stephanie don't get that band, increase the band teacher to 1.0, we would not be able to change our master schedule at Masick because we could not do it with the shared staff. The other shared staff that we do have, with some, with some graciousness on the part of Julia Strong to work with me in, in aligning Masick and Jackie Hollow's schedule, we'll be able to do it with the other shared staff, but this would be an impossibility, so. There's my shameless plug for the elementary.
So when are you gonna present the new schedule to us, so we know what we're talking about?
I gave you a glimpse last year, but whenever you want, probably after, you know, the budget workshops and whatnot, whenever, whenever you want, I can comment and share with you, yeah. But that's, that's it for me, the rest of it is, I'm gonna go over for Mr. Horgan. Any quick, oh, sorry, yeah. Any other questions, I'm sorry.
Any opportunity for community support, like the Wingman program or any of those outside resources that could come to bear on this?
Meaning financial support to support the program or, you know, because the Wingman kids do go out into the community and do things?
No, no. The other way. Money coming in for those programs. You had a grant before, the grant's gone.
Grant is gone.
Any opportunities for outside organizations to possibly sponsor that?
It's a great question. I saw that we may be looking for a grant writer, that'd be a fantastic thing. Or Ash, can you put that, no, Mr. Lowell, maybe?
Dennis, to speak to that, we actually did find a grant last summer, or last summer, and we got $2,000. It was up to $2,000, I think we got 1,500 because it depended on how many people applied to the program. But we, we did, we are actively, I am actively looking for that stuff all the time. There hasn't been one, I guess that was two summers ago. So that money's about dried up.
Okay.
Well, I, I do look for those things.
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks for having me, everybody, and since last year's budget meetings, we just wanted to highlight, we've had some great success in the athletic department. We've had three state champions, our girls lacrosse team, softball again, and football with the great win in early December. That was actually by my count, our 30th state championship here at Masick, which is, it's an impressive number for any school, but the, the kids are doing great. The budget that will just highlight some points up is just, it shows a commitment to continuing our ability to offer the very best in educational-based athletics, so we're, we're trying to keep that up. The overall budget that we're presenting is actually a, a small decrease from the previous year, but one thing to kind of highlight with that is that there's a significant reduction in our professional services or athletic training services account line because we've kind of moved from paying a, a company to having our own trainer on staff, which has been fantastic. We're just keeping $7,600 in that account line for a substitute. If our trainer does get sick, we need to kind of cover that, it actually happened the other day, we needed a substitute for a basketball game, so that's what, what that would be.
So big article in the Connecticut Post.
Gigantic article, yeah?
About just the shortage of trainers in the state.
UConn's cutting the program, I heard.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, when they listed all the programs getting cut from UConn athletic trainers.
So now that the trainer's a Board of Ed employee, that salary is not part of this athletic controllable budget and that's why even though it shows a short--
So the 7,600 would be the substitutions with nurses potentially?
The 7,600 would be substitutions--
Trainers.
Trainers, yeah.
But if you can't find trainers?
Well, then we get somebody, yeah.
Right, yes, right. We've done that before, but you know, we, we have a pretty good relationship with the company that provided us substitutes while we were looking for the trainers, so they've been pretty good and they actually did it on less than 24 hours' notice the, the other day, so. But yes, the nurses would be the backup to the backup. Moving down to, the transportation number is actually down a little bit, so what we did when we looked at that was we looked back at what was done in '23, '24, and we didn't look at the budgeted items, but we looked at the actual usage. And we took those numbers of what was actually used in transportation and then we added about 4% to that. All-Stars increase was gonna be 3%, but the, we added 1% in case we have to go to a charter, something more expensive. The reason why those were so off is because in '22, '23, we had a big shortage and the athletic department was using charters to go literally across, you know, to Trumbull. So everything was, things kind of normalized, so now we're trying to bring it back a little bit. I will say that after this budget was submitted, I'm a little concerned because we got a call from All-Star and once our fall season ended and our winter season began, they said they can no longer supply school buses before 4:30, which is a bit of a, a problem because they, they only have the buses for the, the runs. So to give you an idea, and in order to get some of our teams places, what we need to do is we, we might need to leave at 2:30 or 3 o'clock, and so we have to go to outside companies, which is a little bit more. And this budget, that number was built off of assuming we could get mostly All-Star buses. In the fall, we had 101 trips and All-Star was able to, to service 85% of those. In the winter, right now, we currently have budgeted 71 trips for our teams and All-Star is going to service 63% of those. If you take out the weekend trips, All-Star can really only service 39 to 40% of our athletic trips, which means we have to go do charter companies. There's B&amp;B Transportation, which is let's say 20 to 30% more per bus, and then if we go past that one, we're actually getting a school rate with B&amp;B, but if we have to go to like Carriage or Dadco, it costs more. So we're a little concerned if we can't get those school buses for the afternoon trips. So while that number is a decrease, there's, there's a bit of a concern there. And then moving down, one of the things that I did was the, kind of looked at the uniform cycle every year. We, we have like a five-year cycle of, of getting the teams new uniforms and I don't know if you want to pass that down, Steve.
Just so everybody knows, so just to make sure you heard it, the transportation budget was done prior to All-Star notifying us that they weren't going to allow or be able to provide buses before 4:30. Thankfully, Brian and Carolyn have been doing a, a great job of pre-booking B&amp;B. B&amp;B will give us a school bus, which means it's significantly less than, than a coach.
Right, at, at a school, at a school rate.
At a school rate.
So we get a school rate, which is about 95%.
Yeah, they're out of--
Stephanie?
I'm not, Carolyn would know. I mean--
Brian's at the same rate that we pay All-Star?
You know, I looked, it, it's really tough to compare, but it's, it's, it's $95 an hour, it's a little bit more, I mean, for example, we sent our football team to Benow. We sent two buses and that was about $900. That was with All-Star. We had to send football to New Milford, which is a little bit farther on B&amp;B, and those two buses were 1,500. So it's, it's a little bit more, it's not like going on a coach bus, but it is a little bit more and like Steve said, they, they notified us once I, I turned this in and a couple of weeks went by and they said they can't. So you know, we're doing okay, but it's, it's something to, to keep in mind as we go.
That's a really low percentage of coverage.
Of the--
It is. In, in the winter it is and you know, the spring, there's more early trips because you're playing in daylight, you know, so we have some teams that play at night now, so we get--
Just their coverage, I mean, we have a contract with them, right? Is it time to revisit our contract?
Well, they can't find the buses, they're telling you.
Well, they, they have had some drivers out. I mean, in fairness to, to them, they have had some drivers out. Like I noticed even today, my, my kid's driver had finally back, you know, had been out for, for a few months, actually, they've had different drivers, so, I mean, but obviously very problematic if they're gonna continue to not be able to service, especially at a 63%.
We advertise for that time, so we're always sending stuff out on the school messenger for them, looking for, looking for drivers, we always have them, they put up signs for us, but it's an issue and I know it's an issue--
You know, if you remember a year ago, I think the increase I had up there for transportation was around $96,000. You know, we were able to cut significantly that before, you know, by the end of it, but because I think something went out in the paper and all of a sudden All-Star was able to satisfy athletic runs, but anyway, I, I think it's something, I, I don't know if it's a revisit, but it's certainly a, you know, something to be brought up with All-Star.
Revisit the way they do things, maybe they have somebody take the crew and then a different bus pick them up and bring them back.
Yeah, they need a little pressure on it. So anyway, but you know, just to defend Brian, the budget was done before he was notified of that. He came to me, I said, well, let's not, I mean, B&amp;B, again, him and Carolyn, it worked to, to pre-book B&amp;B to make sure we're not paying, you know, the 1,500 dollars for, for these trips and paying, you know, albeit even 20% more than what we would've paid for All-Stars, more, it's not--
It's not a coach bus.
150% more, you know, so.
The other thing that Steve passed out is the, the uniform cycle and basically on there, the current uniforms this year, you know, it's baseball, softball, cheer, football, boys' ice hockey, girls' ice hockey. Next year, it was supposed to be at 24,000, but I kind of rebalanced it. The uniform cycle was built and it kind of fluctuated a lot. It would go from, you know, 40,000 to 25,000 to 40,000 and by moving a couple of teams here and there, we're just trying to stabilize it more around the same number every year. Their uniforms are replaced roughly every five years. Football is, they do one jersey and then they'll wait two years and then they'll do the other jersey because it's such a big team. So we just tried to move a couple of teams away from a football year because it's such a big expense, but that'll, it's a little bit of a decrease, it'll go back up occasionally, but we're trying to keep it within a, a certain ballpark, so it's more consistent. And that's the uniform cycle right there. In terms of the, the additions, some of the things that, that we're asking for to add is a little bit more for our crowd control and site workers. It takes a lot of people to run these events, a lot of staff members do a great job helping us out after hours. We really want to kind of increase the visibility of our staff at the football games especially, that's one. We found that track and field is a little bit understaffed, so we want to get a few more people working on those events and that's what that 3675 number represents. And we found that in, for a couple of the games, when we did kind of have more people working, the students were better behaved, they were more engaged, so it, it was a positive in the way that we produced and ran the games. The athletic department costs is our biggest increase. We discovered that we need about $10,000 a year in field paint and we were underbudgeted by 5,000, so we have to, we'd like to increase that to make sure we get all our fields painted. We have two golf carts that service our department and because the campus is so spread out, especially in the fall and the spring, one of the golf carts can make it up the hill at about a half a mile an hour, and I tried to get a repair and they said, you're, you're better off, you're better off looking for a replacement. The repairs would be almost as much as just getting a used one. And that golf cart gets used a lot, especially on like a football game, we have to bring handicapped people up and down and that leaves our trainer with something that can barely move. So I, I think that would be a worthwhile addition. And then we do have some increases with our registration and software programs that help us get our students registered and help our coaches with their video analysis and things like that. And then the final one, I'm actually gonna skip Steve because I thought, I probably shouldn't end my presentation talking about toilets.
Aw, you can, come on.
That's gonna be a great joke to do.
Yeah, I know, but that, it says portable toilets, it's 3240, but really what we're doing is we're just trying to make things a little bit, put things in the right places. That used to be in that last slide, athletic other expenses, but really it should be in rentals and leases and that will increase a little bit. The 810 is just to cover converting from a regular portable bathroom to a handicap one for the softball field and the baseball field in the spring, so we have those, we just, so that's a little bit more of a cost. And the last one is we put in for, we're asking for a little bit of a contribution for ice time for our boys and girls ice hockey teams. Right now, our teams cover the cost on their own. the cost on their own. And this year especially has been tough. The cost is roughly about $3,000 per player on the boys' team. The girls' is a little bit less because they have more. We only have 17 boys that are playing. And this is, this is a tough one because it's done so differently across our league. If you look at someplace like Weston, they cover the entire expense of ice hockey. If you look at Nanowog, who we co-opt with for girls, they cover absolutely nothing. I got some feedback from Newtown. Newtown just provides a flat fee of $20,000, and they use that for ice time. New Fairfield provides 6,000, and they're co-opted, so they have different numbers. What we're asking for is the 300 represents the surcharge that all our athletes pay. And right now, our hockey athletes get no credit for, you know, paying this amount. So if we took that 300 and we, you know, multiplied by 20 individuals, we would get 6,000. That would help with ice time. And for the girls, we have six girls that skate, so that would be the 1,800. The cost for hockey has gone up a lot. In 2024, it was 2,200, and it's been around that $2,000, but it's kind of skyrocketed up to 3,000 this year. So looking for some assistance for that program.
Somebody needs to build an ice rink in Monroe.
Very profitable.
It would be. Yeah, it is. It's crazy how different the different schools are and what they do, what they pay for, and what the families have to pay for.
Anything for Brian or Steve?
Which portable toilet company are you partnering?
Right now, G.I. Johnson.
So it's only an increase of the 810. It's just more that we shifted it to the appropriate line, that it's a 3,240 increase. The increase is really just the 810, as Brian said.
The regular one's 150, the handicap is 280, so.
Where's the ice time? Where do they practice stuff?
They practice at RIS. Thank you both for Steve and Brian. Brian, thank you for, I know it's your first go around with this stuff, but I know, you know, the hesitation is a good example of, you know, efficiencies that Brian's been trying to find constantly to the department. I really appreciate that. Great job so far.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Good discussions. We're going to move on to unfinished business with policies. Second review with a vote anticipated. Christine?
Yep. So the policy's under review for vote tonight. Our 1180 Community Relations Memorials for Deceased Students or Staff, and the new policy is, it's from CAVE, which is just for a time down the road. When the board is faced with requests to memorialize a student or staff member who has passed, the reference packet from the National Association of School Psychologists will guide this policy in the committee under the supervision of the superintendent. About any such plans? Sorry.
Go ahead.
I feel like I'm losing my voice. Okay. And then the second policy was 4115 Personnel Certified Evaluation. And this was just with the changes to the teacher and administrator evaluation. Over the past several years, we were in need of updating our policy to reflect new requirements from the state and use CAVE model for reference. So pretty straightforward.
Sue's not here.
Yeah, I was looking, Sue's not here. Any feedback from them at all?
She didn't, I did share it with her after the last meeting. I gave it to her to look at. She said it looked pretty straightforward at that time, and I haven't heard anything else.
All right. Good, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve policy number 1180 and 4115 as presented at this meeting and the last meeting? Dennis, second by Christine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We have no new business. We have a meeting tomorrow at 6:30. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Jerry. Can I have a second? Christine, no discussion. All in favor. Unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you.